Welcome, everybody, to the Kewa City Council meeting. It is December 12, 2024, our last meeting in December. And we know it is now seven o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Debbie, could you please go first?
Here.
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 All right, we have a call. Everyone, please stand for the cards. But we do also have two members who are gonna help us leave the pledge if they still want to. We'll go on one second.
Hello, my name is Alex Wisper. I'm from troop one-two-seven.
My name is Michael Wisler. I'm from troop one-two-seven. Please, I may apologize for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to approving tonight's agenda. Matt, any changes to the agenda?
We do not need the executive session.
Okay, so striking item eleven off of the agenda. Any questions or changes, council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
We approve the agenda, striking item eleven, executive session.
Second. I have a motion by Todd, a second by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie's five-oh. Move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion for the approval of tonight's consent agenda?
I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five-oh. Move on to the communications section. Each our civic groups are committees. Do we have any civic groups or committees who are here to speak? So no committees here to speak, but I will speak for, well, not speak for the fair committee, but I'll speak on the fair committee. We had our cookies with Santa event on Saturday, and that went really well. We had better weather than we did the year prior, and Santa did not get rained on. So that was good. And right after that, we had the Christmas tree lighting. We had some really nice kids who sang some Christmas carols with us, so that was really fun. I don't have any other committees or groups to talk about, so. All right, we'll move on to Kewa Good News. Does anybody have any Kewa Good News? I do. Go ahead.
I figured I'll just share it up with now. On December first, I had an open house for my Airbnb that's located here in Kewa, and it was a pretty good success. First time trying this, and I got to meet a lot of new people. And the chamber came out and did a ribbon cutting because I wasn't part of the chamber when I opened. And they presented me with a chamber key. And so that's now hanging there for all my guests to see, so it was pretty good. I really enjoyed it.
Yes, it was a really fun event to attend. Thank you for inviting me. Anybody else have Kewa Good News before I give them to us? Staff in Kewa Good News. Hey, I'm first gonna call out the police department. They put out their press release the other day that they attended a birthday party for a thirteen-year-old suspect who is, what was her charge? Attitude, was that it?
Yeah, attitude.
Yeah, attitude, that makes sense. So that was great to see, guys. Thank you for getting out of community policing and being out there, having our residents see you. So thank you so much. Anything else, police, before I move on from you? Okay. I also wanna say that Kewa City Hall looks great decorated. I know Chris, Debbie, and everybody has done a really great job decorating. Came up here, helped a little bit, more like I watched what Chris did at my same awful Christmas carols tour. But that's okay. So thank you, guys, for spreading the cheer here, too. Anything else? Seeing none. I also wanna thank Matt for coming up here last Saturday and helping facilitate the coffee community with the residents. That was great to be able to connect with all of them. We did not stand outside for coffee community because it was a little cold, so we did sit in here inside City Hall. So thank you for all who attended and who were able to participate in that. All right, we'll move on. Oh, I have one more announcement. So I have the mayor for a day contest winner. Thank you, council, for helping me choose a winner. It was really hard. We had some really great and diverse age groups who applied, but ultimately, we have to have a winner. And so our winner is William Igles, and he is fourteen years old. And I've reached out to him to let him know, and hopefully, we'll be able to schedule a time soon for him to come and shadow me for a day and help me run council. So congratulations to him. All right, next, we'll move on to public comment. Before we get to public comment, I wanna speak to what the last speaker spoke to last time. A couple of them were, the speaker mentioned that two items that were core requests, and then the other one was a fitness core, which that will be discussed at a future meeting slash the part four as we move forward into the 2025. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Debbie, do we have any? All right, well, I will officially close public comment for the evening and move on to new business, a Purple Heart City proclamation. Matt?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Zach Schuman with the Purple Heart program is here to give a brief presentation and kind of tell you what the Purple Heart proclamation is for. Just a little bit of a background for the Purple Heart medal. It's presented to men and women of military service that have been injured or killed in action due to the enemies of the United States. Now, the Purple Heart Trail began back in nineteen ninety-two in Mount Vernon, Virginia. And what it is, is it's a trail to create a symbolic honorary system of roadways, highways, bridges, and other monuments all across the U.S. What the Purple Heart Trail accomplishes in this honorary goal is different dedications all across the United States that were created as a visual reminder to those that use the system that others have paid a high price for their freedom to travel and live in a free society. These signs placed in the various locations, they accomplish that goal by giving that visual reminder. So on behalf of the military or the Purple Heart for the state of Kansas, I'm the adjutant Zach Schuman, and it's my honor to receive that proclamation from you. And I just wanna leave you with a little bit of a note here. Finally, with the words that are inscribed on the monument on our Veterans Memorial Park downtown in Wichita, Kansas, says, "My stone is red for the blood they shed. The metal I bear is my country's way to show they care. If I can be seen by all mankind, maybe peace will come in my lifetime." Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you very much. All right, I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the Purple Heart Medal is the oldest military decoration in present use, first created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in seventeen eighty-two and later revived as the Purple Heart Medal in nineteen thirty-two by General Douglas MacArthur, which is awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or killed in combat while serving our nation. And whereas the citizens of Kewa, Kansas have a deep appreciation and abiding respect for the men and women of the armed forces who have served, sacrificed for our country, especially those who have been injured or given their lives in defense of our freedom and way of life. And whereas the city of Kewa, Kansas recognizes the sacrifice of these brave men and women and desire to honor all veterans, particularly those who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. And whereas Kewa acknowledges the importance of paying tribute to those courageous individuals who have demonstrated the highest level of patriotism and valor through their service and sacrifice. And whereas becoming a Purple Heart City reflects the city of Kewa's commitment to honoring and remembering those who have earned the Purple Heart and will serve as a constant reminder to our community of the price of our freedom. And now, therefore, I, Ashley Coleman, Mayor of Kewa, Kansas, do hereby proclaim this city of Kewa as a Purple Heart City and encourage our citizens to show their support for veterans and honor the sacrifices made by Purple Heart recipients. And witness, therefore, I have set my hand and paused the official seal of the city of Kewa, Kansas, to affixate this tenth day of, I think it was supposed to say, it's supposed to say glow, twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, we will receive signs to be placed at our city limits from Zach. He will get those over, and then he will come back, and we will have a brief ceremony for the presentation of those signs, public works we take up and present at the city limits. So everybody coming on the town can see that we are honored to be a Purple Heart City. Zach, thank you.
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate you coming, and we will be posting stuff on Facebook to invite the communities to come out and celebrate with us. So thank you again.
Isn't it appropriate to have a round of applause?
No, I think it's perfect. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the financial update, Q three, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor and Council.
Twenty-four, sorry.
Mr. Matt Lawn, who is our financial advisor, is here to give a financial report. This is the first of many ongoing reports that we will present to the council just to increase that transparency of the funding cooperations of the city to the council and the citizens of the city.
I have a couple of items here that I would go with the man around. And I just wanna introduce myself. I'm Matt Lawn, Baker Taylor is the advisor. I previous to working with Baker Taylor, I was the finance director at C D S Goddard for about two years. So I don't know what you were used to in the past with financial reports, but I promise you that we, we're gonna have a lot more fun than you have before. Everybody thinks that city government, it's the coolest stuff, all the vehicles and equipment that the police fought, or the coolest technology, but it's actually the funniest stuff. On the first page here, we've got a treasury report. And when I say treasury report, I'm talking about your accounts, your property accounts with your bank and your investments. The city has their money invested primarily in this investment pool, which is the state-operated investment vehicle. And you've got most of your money in the overnight pool, which is not uncommon. Right now, it's even higher than the sort that it has in my tenured city government. So one of the first things, and I'm not gonna be here once we get into, you know, modernizing and getting everything going right, but we're probably gonna look at different banking scenarios for you. I know that a lot of banks right now are, you know, they've got a lot of services available to them that pay much higher interest on regular operative accounts and things like that. So that'll give the cities a possibility in operation, so you're not constantly having to transfer money in that investment. I'm not that it's difficult, it's just that it takes time. And another thing is, too, is we're gonna get better. And I think that's what we're gonna take care of, we're just gonna get, you know, we haven't got a single person that's getting a signer on the accounts. So we're gonna get, you know, we're gonna have multiple people, multiple group officers who are making big wires and things like that, which is like, you know.
Before we move on, I wanna make it clear, we did have multiple people signing at the time. It was me, Debbie, Teresa. We had multiple people signing.
Right, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that's clear for the public.
Right, I'm talking more about the lead, or it should be a senior head person on the account that controls everything. So we're gonna have representatives of multiple staff members that have part of a certain professional employment to make those decisions.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Next, we're talking about major revenue performance. So general fund, it's the first page here. These are your main revenue sources. We're gonna be adding one tax, which is property tax. And then the next big one is gonna be state local tax, the state of the sales tax. The number on here is a combination of both your city one set tax and the fact of various sales tax, which we share with county plus the compensative lease tax. If you look at the last page of the package stuff I gave you, a different report, it shows a history of your city one set tax, which looks like to me it went into effect beginning in probably July of last year. You have the first return to come in in August, and usually, it takes about a month to get those returns to come in. And it's been very small amounts, but it gets a little in, into effect July first. So you're gonna get some, this is not a great comparison year to year, obviously. You didn't have four years worth of revenue last year. So I broke it down to the four comparable months of the last year versus this year. We actually did collect some tax. And again, that's also gonna be skewed. You can see in that first month of August, we didn't collect very much. But I just wanted you to show that you have grown. It looks like you're growing pretty steadily, but you're collecting stuff. It's not, you know, producing the revenue you intended for. I believe you're dedicating that toward road for IJAC for now, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be a good piece of those monies. An interesting tidbit, which you may not be interested in, if you happen to notice, is you collect quite a bit more, or at least on par, compensative use tax with sales tax. And I'm assuming you have a quick, a quick dirty, there's actually a distinction in the law to the, Matt, that I shared with them. Sales tax is collected at the point of sale. So that's gonna be what the, you know, the good consumer, you pay for your item, they collect sales tax, that gets remitted as sales tax. Compensative use tax is sales tax, but it's sales tax collected outside of the jurisdiction. So you buy something on Amazon, the tax they collect, that gets, that gets remitted to the state as compensative use tax. That's why there's a difference. And, you know, a lot of cities have a bigger retail presence. The compensative use tax is typically gonna be a smaller fraction than when you're collecting sales tax, because you guys, you know, pretty evenly between out of distance sales and, you know, in council, they're very close to it. So that's just something that I noticed that might be. But anyway, they're both, they're both paying you sales tax, maybe reporting sales tax. And if I had been one that set it up back in the day, I would, I would set up two different wine items to capture those, just because I like to have the full scope of where everything's specifically going forward. But what we're gonna do is going forward is, once they get put into the system, I'm gonna keep a running chart showing what actually goes where. So you know how much to transfer with those, or that in front of you. Other revenues we're gonna look at, your bond and interest fund, that's your debt service fund. So that's typically collecting revenue from special property taxes to go for debt repayment. Big revenue sources for your street funds would be fuel taxes, the state of fuel taxes, the county fuel, or the county fuel taxes, the state fuel tax that you collect. And what's at the other portion of your, of the sales taxes are going from there. And then the bottom there, I just have a, you're like, versus last year, the budget of your utility fund sales. Another thing I wanna point out, in case you have questions, is we'll see there's a drop of revenue year to year for gas utility. And looking back through your records, all I can tell is that in twenty-two and twenty-three, both, you have record high Q one fuel or gas sales. And that, I believe, was due to the insurance that happened at that time and probably the associated price, price of fuel at the time, well, contributed to that. So as far as, you know, underperforming, I'm not overly concerned about it, but it's only gonna be, you know, I'm reporting here. On the budget performance side, the expenditure side, basically, what we have for me now is, in the package that seems like I gave you, I've got a revenue expenditure, the budget for all of your operating funds. I'm just gonna highlight your major funds here, particularly the funds that actually are budgeted per state block, because those are the ones we're actually most strict with, the kind of expense. So you look to general fund here, remember the bar, it's gonna be a percentage of expenditures versus budget. So you've spent your sixty-one percent of your budget already through September, so you're in good shape for this year. That will, that number is probably a little bit lower than it would be just because there haven't been any transfers done yet. There's a transfer at the end of the year. But so that, that will bring that expenditure total up somewhat that it's not, it's on, it's on the case with what your budget projections were. Bond interest is the same. That bond interest number is usually typically budgeted higher anyway, so you have the possibility for, you know, the higher debt, adding new debt in the, the large contracts, you know, more of that. Now, your highway fund, again, right on pace with where it used to be. Again, some of these funds that we have, I won't transfer against them. Those are what kind of, when those occur, but again, I just, you know, we're concerned about there. Then we're getting in your utility funds. Again, you know, max number's gonna be seventy-five percent. So if you think it's that seventy-five percent, it's right on pace with the budget. If it's under seventy-five percent, the expense side is, you know, you're not spending, you're, you know, more than on pace to be, or less than on pace to be budgeted. So I don't see any, cause they're messing with any of your operating funds at all. And those are primarily, primarily, you know, the funds that are subject to budget authority of arms, so. Everything's in pretty good shape. There's a lot, I've spent a lot of time with your financial system, going into history and some of the things that did pop up to me, that's what I seem to be concerned about. I think there's a lot of things we need to process wise to improve going forward. Zach's great, I'm, you know, a slicker, and I'm asking kind of questions. He answered and helped me out with everything, more than, more than helpful. Coming up and beyond, about that technology issues, they're, you know, they're giving me their time to issue all that concern. So I've been very, very happy, very welcomed by everybody I've met, obviously, Zach. You guys have any questions for me? I'll have to answer anything I can now. If you have questions in the future, if there's anything specific you'd like to see in these financial reports, please tell Matt, you know, you can even march orders. I have a little bit of history with this city. I believe it was before you were on the board. Years ago, I, I was friends with a former finance director here, and she brought me in to help with creating some financial reports that she did. And then when she left, I ended up coming over and helping out some of those for a couple of months. I've gotten a little bit familiar with the city, but that was back in the old financial software. And so it's a new, it's a new beast to work with the platform. It's great, but it's a lot to do, so.
How far, any questions? Yeah, it's very easily, so thank you so much.
It's nice to meet you over the course of it.
Yeah, one thing Matt and I have talked about is, of course, these are just the initial reports, but we're going to build on these reports, make them a lot easier to understand, easier to read, incorporate some graphs and charts, things like that, so.
I like colors when I'm presenting financials. I apologize for the font color of that one page where I had that weird green. It looked different on my computer screen, that's why I would have chosen. But yeah, I like, if you, when you look at financial reports that finance people, your officer deals with, it is nothing but black and white, lines and lines and lines and lines of what looks like computer code almost. It is just raw data. It is not useful to decision makers. Decision makers need to have a better understanding, and they need to have things broken down, presented in a way that makes sense for your specific operations. I don't think you guys are ready or need to move toward a super, you know, specific performance-based budgeting type program where you're looking at specific city operations, specific total number of revenue that goes into each of those, run those operations, and then, you know, performance measures measure whether or not they're meeting their goals. I don't think that's necessary for a city this size, which has challenges. But I do think we need to present your financials in a way that they make sense to you and the people that you're serving, because they're the ones that need to be able to look at something and understand what it means. So we're gonna, this is, this is kind of a first run draft at it. But in the future, I hope that's something that not only is easier to understand, but also, you know, something that's, we're able to keep updated regularly with minimal efforts of keeping everything, you know, timely and accurate and everything else. Your color choices are bringing this to a red is bad.
No, red bad, please no red. Well, okay. Thank you.
I look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you very much.
Awesome, great, thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, item seven C, N R P Resolution twenty-four dash seven-seven-six, setting public hearing.
Mayor and Council, at past meetings, we have discussed the N R P, the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. The council gave us direction and kind of our marching orders as to what you wanted to see in that plan. We updated the plan to reflect those, and that, this will be the next step in the process of moving towards possibly approving that program. What you're doing tonight, this resolution sets a public hearing for January ninth, and that is also the date that the council would consider approving the N R P, which will put into motion all the other things that come with the N R P. Just reaching out to other taxing entities to get them on board with the N R P to make it a whole rather than just a portion of Kewa's taxes. So that's what this does tonight. Does not approve the N R P, just sets the public hearing for.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four, item seven-seven-six, a scheduled public hearing on January ninth, twenty twenty-five. Will operate still publication and reverse hearing.
Wait a second.
I'm second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five-oh. Move on to item seven D, Resolution twenty-four dash seven-seven-seven, that's your floor.
Mayor and Council, in March of this year, you approved authorizing IRBs for construction team group, for some construction of the, in the industrial park. They had anticipated that the construction would be complete by the end of this year. It is not going to be. So what we need to do by resolution is extend that IRB through twenty twenty-five. What this will do is it actually helps the city, I guess you could say, because the city will collect this year's portion, the pro-rated portion of the property taxes for that property on what has been completed on that project in twenty twenty, it would be twenty-five or twenty-six.
It was the sixth.
Yeah, so twenty-six, it will come off the tax rolls and the IRB will start. So we will collect an extra year of property taxes on this project.
Council, any questions about this? We see no concerns in this. I know I've heard a question, honor of.
No, and this was, this was a construction team group's request, and we have.
All right. I guess, I guess I'll rephrase. Do we see any not benefits for Kewa?
No.
Okay, that's why I wanted to put that on. Any other questions, council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
We approve Resolution, Resolution twenty-four dash seven-seven-seven, and then Resolution twenty-four dash seven-sixty-one of the city Kewa, and the mayor's.
Wait a second. Second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five-oh. Move on to item seven E, Resolution twenty-four dash seven-seven-eight, Declaration of City Boundaries.
Mayor and Council, this resolution has to do with an annexation that took place this past year, where as the city annexed the town, a portion of property for the Kewa township, anytime the city changes its boundaries. Anytime the city changes its boundaries during the year, state law requires that we state those changes and send those to the state. So what this resolution does is just legally state the new boundaries of Keichai. There's about four pages of legal descriptions, and I have no clue what it says, but Andrew assures me that this is what we need.
Yeah, Andrew.
Andrew it all out.
I'm sure he did. Any questions, council? I'm seeing none, so I would entertain a motion. We don't have that.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seven seven eight, the resolution defining the entire boundary of the city of Keichai towns and areas.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to old business, park board appointments. So I made a mistake last night, all in them too. I said that we were appointing seven people, and I only named six because my counting skill's raw. So I'm going to make an appointment tonight and hope that you guys accept my appointment, and both of them in. So I would like to nominate Elizabeth Bassville, Bassford, sorry. Liz is a resident of Keichai and served on the park board as president. Wasn't present the whole time, but from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, where she helped to deliver, to develop the Keichai master plan. Liz states, I have the experience, the passion, and the energy to volunteer for this board. And she has been very active and helpful in the community in the past couple of years, and really excited. Hope you guys will approve this nomination. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. For park board?
All right. I have a motion by Paul, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Now we'll move on to planning commission appointments. And we have two tonight. This will get us to fill our planning commission again, correct?
Correct. At the last meeting, council approved redefining the two members that serve on the board that are supposed to be from outside the city. They're supposed to be from outside the city within the area of influence, which is defined as a three-mile radius of the city limits. Within that three-mile radius, they can't be in Park City, they can't be in Melly City, they can't be in Bel Air. So that further shrinks our applicable from those rural areas. That change now allows us to fill those two positions with either a person from outside the city within that area of influence or a person from within the city. What that will enable us to do at this point is fill with two people from inside the city, and we will have a full convention.
So I would like to make the nomination of nominations of Cheryl Hobson and Becky Elder. Cheryl's strong connection to Keichai, active involvement in community, and forward-thinking mindset would make her an asset to the planning commission. And Becky Elder is an active part of the community and a resident of Sunnydale addition. Becky's vision for maintaining the history of the city while having a vision for controlled growth, coupled with her knowledge and openness to listen, will be an asset to the commission. I would probably nominate both of those lovely ladies for the naming commission, and I would entertain a motion. I have a second. Ooh, that's quick. I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Carrie's five oh. Congratulations, Cheryl. And Becky, she's not here. So congratulations, Cheryl. We'll move on to council reports. Does any other council member have a report for this evening?
I do. And I've already sent it to.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I also enjoyed the cookies with Santa and the tree lighting with Fairport. It was a really great time, spending time with some of the citizens and the children, and hope to do it again next year. It was a great time, so thank you, Fairport.
All right. Here's my report. I will go fast because Debbie already has a copy of it, and she won't film for this. So city meetings that I have reported to, it's actually a lot shorter than normal. Eleven sixteen, I went to the Sedge County Association of Cities meeting in Bel Air with Matt, and we took a tour of the clinic in a can while also discussing housing shortages. Eleven twenty-one was a fair committee meeting. Twelve five was a work plan discussion for the regional economic area partnership. Twelve six, sales tax meeting with Sedge County and Sedge County mayors. Twelve seven, coffee community, cookies with Santa, tree lighting at city hall with the chamber. And I just want to say Bob's Cookies, so Karen's husband, Bob, made amazing cookies, mint chocolate chip cookies, and they were great. And people really enjoyed them, so thank you, and you'll definitely have to bring those again next year. So thank you very much, and thank you to council member Baldridge and council member Verstein for both volunteering as well. I know you're part of Fairport, but still, thank you for your time. Twelve nine, the Keichai Chamber and the Arts Council had their Christmas party, and my husband became a part of the turtle club. So he won a gift from one of our residents, and it's a shirt that has turtles on it, and apparently he is now part of the club. So congratulations to him. Items that I worked on this month, Mayor for a Day, newsletter discussion, discussion of Facebook posts, park board, intersection projects, county updates, resident concerns, discussion of interim processes, discussion of council meetings, discussion of public safety, discussion of groups that we had as part, that we are a part of, REIT, STACK, and others. Discussion about the next coffee in communities and the schedule for those civic group meetings and discussions, Art Valley News and Lamp items. Responded to emails from residents, helped decorate city hall and, helped decorate and clean up for cookies with Santa. Attended and volunteered for the fair committee event and chamber event, attended and helped facilitate coffee in communities. Attended planning team meetings for REIT, attended meetings for Sedge County sales tax, met with the city minister multiple times, and had multiple phone calls, and talked with city staff. That's my report. I tried it. All right. Any other reports before I move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff report, just your words if you have any, because I know we usually do this the second part of the month.
Yeah, we do. And in November and December, we only have one meeting. So I told our department heads they didn't need to be here, that we would resume their reports in January. So they just kind of provide me with an update of what's going on through our discussions, and I'll just kind of fill you in on some of the things they're doing. Our public works, of course, is always busy with meterings, checking gas meters, making sure there's no leaks, grading roads. They've been spending a lot of time on the Oliver project, making sure that the crews down there are, whatever they're doing is out of the way of our water lines, our sewer lines, our gas lines, all the other things down there. They spent a lot of time this month setting up the Christmas tree out in the front yard. They built a custom stand for that Christmas tree because the one last year broke in the wind. And then they got the lights strung up on it, and half the lights didn't work, and they had to rewire things. They literally spent an entire week working on the Christmas tree up here, so. But it looks nice. They did a good job. The only other thing he has on here, Thomas did this month go up and assist the city of Mount Ridge. They had a, they had their own gas utility as well, and had a gas leak on one of their main lines, and don't have anybody that's certified to fix that. So Thomas, of course, is certified, so he went up there and helped them with their system. That's really something we do between cities when we need help. We call on one another and provide our systems. So he could go up and help with that, and I'm glad he could, and I'm sure there you would have to, but he could. So he helped Angel on it. And we will surely in the future have a need for somebody else to help us, and we can't just kind of have that work to work with each other. Police Department, they are fully set. We have all of our officers back. Officer Mounts, who is here tonight, recently graduated from police academy. He is currently in his field training phase. So you go through seventeen weeks of basic training at the state academy. You stay there, you live there for seventeen weeks, kind of like the military, not quite as strict. But after you graduate from the academy, then you come back to your home agency. Each agency has a different field training program. And Officer Mounts, yours is how many weeks? So he's in fourteen weeks of field training. And what that field training does is really provides them the nuts and bolts of how to be a police officer. You learn all the basic stuff at the academy, and then you learn how to really be a police officer when you come back to your, your host agency and get out there. So I've heard nothing but great things from him or about him. We hired another officer, Officer Bolden. He is a full-time certified officer, has worked for other departments in the area. He is currently our overnight officer. So now we have an officer out throughout the week and weekends overnight. So as you're sleeping, there's somebody working, controlling the city, and keeping things safe, and that's what we want. With the police department, it looks like that's it, just routine calls. Had quite a few callouts, and they are covering, of course, the city during the holidays, even over Thanksgiving and Christmas, when everybody else is off, they're working. So see them, wave at them, tell them thank you, because they are out there working and everybody is. City Hall is, is running great. Everybody's adjusting to their new positions. Things are kind of calming down a little bit. Debbie and Chris specifically have taken on a lot of additional work, and they're just doing an outstanding job. Of what works has been out working in the cold. They're down one person still, trying to find a person to fill that position. And our customer service clerk here at city hall, Chris and Debbie interviewed, I don't know, what'd you interview? About six people maybe for that position? Five or six? Just four, okay. It's he, one, yeah. And selected a gentleman who will start later, kind of mid-JANuary, correct? Yeah. Recent graduate from his K-State, from K-State, has his bachelor's degree in some type of public administration in political science, and he is going in to start off his master's degree. His career goal is to become a city administrator, so maybe we can help guide him on that course. And who knows, he may be your next city administrator sometime, so. We're excited to have him. It will take a lot of load off, put on office as far as answering phones, doing some of those sundry tasks that they have to do that takes away from their productivity, so we're looking forward to that. Other than that, everything's still here? Any questions?
I'm thinking I talked too long, so.
Legal, do you have anything?
Nope.
Never do. All right. Looks like we have no other business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Who moved that we adjourn? Motion by Karen, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Happy holidays to everybody who adjourned.